Evening. City of Lamarck City Council Special Agenda of August twenty ninth, twenty twenty-two. Notices hereby given that the City Council of the City of Lamarck, Texas will conduct a special meeting on August twenty ninth, twenty twenty-two, beginning at six P. M. Council chambers at eleven oh nine B by you road Lamarck, Texas, as well as via video conference hosted through Zoom. In accordance with section five five one dot one two seven B, the Texas Local Government Code, the Presiding Officer in the form of the Lamarck City Council intended to be and will physically be present at eleven oh nine B by your road Lamarck, Texas. Location will be open to the public and the meeting will be broadcast at this location on channel sixteen and via YouTube. The council meet for the purpose of considering the following agenda. The meeting has been called order here.
Councilmember District A.
Present.
Councilmember District B.
Present.
Councilmember District C.
Present.
Councilmember District D.
Present.
And there.
Present. Thank you, Kira. We will now have our invocation and pledge. We've asked Mayor Pro Tim Joe Campion to lead us in our vacation. And Councilmember Michael Caution to lead us in our pledge.
May we pray. Almighty God, we find ourselves here today again doing doing your work. Your work asks us to to contemplate and to make decisions accordingly that are best for all of our community. And that is always a challenge that that we have as members of this council. But more importantly, that challenge is a bit easier, Lord, be when your citizens also participate with us in giving us guidance and feedback in our activities. And that's what we pray for our small community, that we always grow, that we remind we 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 look for you to provide us guidance in all that we say, do, think, and write as well to Almighty Father. It is always in your holy name that we pray. Amen.
All right, we now will have our. Yes, yes, yes. Good, Joe.
Mayor, if I could ask for point of a request, personal privilege request. If we just briefly take one item from eight one at this time, items for the good of the council, the community.
Thank you.
And read a proclamation that we have.
Thank you, Joe.
Thank you.
That's what I need you to do. So certainly, we learned here recently of the passing of one of Lamarck's extraordinary citizens. Ms. Lucille Moinich. She has volunteered in our city in very, very many capacities. A great advocate for our community. And we certainly want to acknowledge her work in our community. And we want to acknowledge all of the wonderful things that we benefit from as relates to her service. And so the Office of the Mayor for the City of Lamarck proclamation. Whereas Lucille Gandy Monich was born in Honey Island, Texas, and later moved to Galveston where she met the love of her life, Harry Wesley Monich Junior. And whereas together they moved to the City of Lamarck where they lived for more than thirty years. And whereas Ms. Monich spent much of her ninety-nine years on this earth as a beloved mother, friend, active volunteer within her church and community. And whereas her life was dedicated to the best interest of the community and her family, serving the youth of Lamarck through the Youth Aid Project, which provided toys for children at Christmas, participating in the goal division of the Texas City Lamarck Chamber of Commerce, Lamarck Crime Stoppers, Little League, and other service organizations. And whereas Ms. Moinich, Ms. Moinich's legacy is one of an accomplished and well-respected individual within our community, and the City of Lamarck is blessed to have known and share those areas of life with her. And whereas the City of Lamarck expresses a deep appreciation and recognition of Lucille Gandy Monich's many contributions to our city and its citizens, especially the youth. And now be it resolved, City of Lamarck mourns with the family and friends of Ms. Lucille Moinich. And now therefore, we, the mayor and city council, by virtue of our authority vested by the City of Lamarck, Texas, do hereby proclaim today as Lucille Moinich Memorial Day in the City of Lamarck and do hereby extend our deepest sympathy to those who knew and loved him. Testimony whereof witnessed my hand and the seal of the City of Lamarck this twenty-ninth day of August, twenty twenty-two. Keith Bell, Mayor. Certainly, let's have, if you all don't mind, a moment of silence as we remember the legacy of Ms. Moinich. I believe that a member of her family was here earlier, who is not in the best of health. So she was unable to remain, but certainly we honor her legacy with this moment of silence. We thank God for the life and contribution of Lucille Moinich, and we pray for the Moinich family. Item four, citizens' participation limited to three minutes per person. Comments from the public will be heard at this time. Any person with city-related business who has signed up may speak to council, limited to three minutes. If wishing to speak, you may give the mayor your full name, address, and the item you wish to speak about. Applies with the Texas Open Meetings Act, the city may not deliberate on comments. Personal attacks will not be allowed. A personnel matter should be addressed by the city ma- addressed to the city manager during normal business hours. You're visiting with us via phone, you may press star six to mute and unmute yourself if you wish to speak. If you're visiting with us via Zoom on smartphone, tablet, or computer, there should be a microphone icon at the lower portion of your screen. And you may press to mute and unmute yourself. If you're in person, you may approach the podium to my left and to your right. Give me your name, address, and you will be heard for your three minutes. If you are visiting with us via Zoom and you know how, if you want to speak or you wish to speak, please press the hand raising icon now. If you're visiting via Zoom and you wish to speak, please press the hand raising icon now. If you do not know how, you may unmute yourself now. Very good. Move to those persons in our presence. Ms. Eva Livy. Welcome, Ms. Eva. As always, name and address, please.
Good evening, everyone. I don't know. I got called first, but here I go. Um, back in. Oh, I'm sorry. Eva Libby, two eight zero eight Business Street. Back in June, I had brought to the attention of the council and the board in regards to all the yield signs that we had. I made attention to thirteen yield signs. I hope everyone still remembers that. I believe that Karen has passed that around. Um, and it stated in the meeting notes that I did make a notage of all these yield signs in the area. On Friday, there was an accident at Oak Lawn and Lake Road. And it just, it it concerns me as a citizen that if there was a stop sign, now I'm not somebody who can say if there was or there wasn't, but it concerns me to know that we have a yield sign in an area that should be a stop sign, period. And these thirteen signs have to be replaced. That to have a yield sign as you approach Lake Road is not smart. It's not safe. And it endangers not just our community, but our children. So if we're not going to be proactive on it and no one was reactive, I I'm feeling like no one's active. It's like inactive on this. This is a huge issue in that specific area of our street on Lake Road, which we all know is a high-speed traffic area. And they have yield signs there is not acceptable. When you're approaching Lake Road, not to have a stop sign, if you're someone not from the city, you're not going to know that. And for our community to protect them and our children, I think we can all agree, since it's already been been brought up once. We've had accidents on that street in that area where all those yield signs are. This is something that needs to be addressed. In Oak Lawn and Lake, on Friday, there was a three-car accident that caused people to go to the hospital. So that's all I have to say on that. And I'm just disappointed that it's something that was brought up to council. And it's something that hasn't even been brought up. I did ask for it to go on an agenda, and it didn't. And it's on the meeting notes from that meeting. So that's all I have to say. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Eva. James Osteen. Welcome, James. All right, how are you? Name and address, sir. I hear that.
James Osteen, twenty twelve Jared Donner Street. I want to talk about the Galveston County contract for the providing thorough services for the unincorporated areas. I don't have no problem with that. What I'm concerned about is the literature in the contract or the language in the contract. If you want to go to page forty-one on your packet, that's where the contract's at. And I I'm discussing with Gus, I'll trade the attorney for the meeting. It reads like this. This contract is made by and between the County of Galveston, Texas, acting by and through its Commissioners Court, herein called the county, and the City of Lamarck, Texas, acting by and through its city commission, wherein called city or recipient. The language I I don't think we need in there is we're not a, we don't have a city commission form of government. We've got a city council form of government. That ought to read, in my opinion, by and through its city council. I think Gus didn't really have an issue with that. I think he kind of agrees with me. And kind of clean that language up. This is a contract we got from the county, not something we produce.
Yeah.
If y'all, if y'all take that into consideration, it might might help us on down the road, keep even being misunderstanding what kind of government we have.
Yes, sir. I appreciate that. Thank you. Joseph Lowry. Welcome, Joseph. Name and address, sir.
Joseph Lowry, two five zero three Cedar Drive. First, I'd like to thank the court watchers that are online. It's a a good organization. What they do is they they fight corruption. They they go after attorneys, corrupt attorneys, corrupt judges, stuff like that. They've done a lot of great work. So I appreciate them being here. My understanding is that these can be not put on this meeting, but they can be put on the next meeting.
If you want, if you want to hand those out to us, you can give them to me or the city clerk, and we'll pass them down.
And then for the for the citizens to be able to see it online, can we do that next meeting?
Or that, see, I can't deliberate on comments, and and that would be me doing that, so.
I'll I'll pass these around. But I want to bring up a couple of things. One is the lies of racism. I've I've asked for those lies to stop for, you know, well over a year. I've been accused of owning a Confederate flag. I've never owned one in my life, not a not a flag, not a hat, not a T-shirt, nothing. It was a Confederate anything. And but these are some penal codes on perjury, oppression, stuff like that. I'll give those to you. Another thing, a lot of a lot of fake news out there, you know, Dawson Day News, can't report accurate information. They have the information. They're just not reporting the information to the community fairly. But the Mike Jones guy was actually sent to my home, and this is his vehicle. And we also have his license plate. We also have him on camera, and we have date, timestamp, and all that. So I'm going to pass this to the council. And another thing I wanted to bring up was the these lies about racism and and whatnot that have continuously been spewed from council has also alarmed the city, the citizens. For instance, there was gunshots on Lake and Cedar last night, and the citizens immediately went to Facebook to see if I was okay. That's terrible. That is terrible. The lies have got to stop. I'm asking again, the lies have got to stop. Where's the proof? Then I'll bring the next meeting. Will we talk about that?
Thank you, Joseph. Carlton Mayo. Mayo. Welcome, Carlton. Name and address, sir.
Carlton Mayo. They on Rosalie Street seventeen sixteen. And it's been called to my attention that somewhat of harassment has started to go on to members on city council. And I feel like it's something that picture that's to me raising its ugly head. Just so happened that two city council, well, the one city council and the other head official are African-American. And I've been here most of my life. Elementary school here. Junior high school here, class of seventy-five. Never heard, whether it's true or not, I've never heard such a thing. I mean, we have people that are are new to the table. Some nice things are going on in Lamarck right now. A lot of people here that have been here through the good and the bad, the ups and downs. And just like to see everyone have a seat at the table, I guess you could say. And but at this recall that someone is boldly displaying and seem like have been displaying since certain people have gotten elected continues, I can't see why they would say anything other than what people are calling it. I prefer not even say what to call it. But but if if it does continue and proceed, I'd like for someone to be able to let me know what recourse is there to attempt to put a stop to it. Other than stepping down and and a reelection. I truly hope that it didn't get to that point, but I'd really like to see if there's anything that citizens can have to to know what recourse to have for that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayo. Bohana. Welcome, Bo. Name and address.
My name is Bohana. I've been a resident of Lamarck for fifty-four years, and I've seen quite a few changes take place, positive and negative. And I want to make some comments. I'm here to talk about the recall. I'm here to protest about the recall, City of Lamarck making progress and implements of the city. I like to to make a comment to the mayor and also to council members that I think Lamarck is is doing a fantastic job of bringing industry into our city. And also building homes, for instance, like the Delaney. Delaney Coles. And also, I like to praise the mayor of the city, the city council members, the park board members, economic development, the city manager, and then the city employees. About the recall, I've talked to several people, and nobody can tell me the reason for a legitimate reason for the recall. And I think it's unfair. Let me give you sort of an example. If you're in your home, policeman comes and kick your door down, put you in handcuffs, throw you in the back of a vehicle, take you to jail, take your pictures, lock you up for no reason at all, how would you feel? For no reason at all, how would you feel being arrested and being treated that way? It's not fair. And I think the same thing is about this recall. We don't have any justification to do what we doing. And I like to see this stop. Here we are. Everything is working. And it's like putting sugar in your gas tank to keep your engine from running. Nothing, far as I'm concerned, nothing is broken, so why do we want to try to fix it? What we need to do is all work together, citizens of Lamarck. I don't disrespect anyone until they disrespect me. And I feel now at this particular time, I'm being disrespected because of the recall of the mayor and the city council member. That involves me and not only me, but the citizens of Lamarck. As I say, I've been here fifty-four years. I love this place, and I do anything I can do to improve it. But you've got some folks out there, and they can't give me a reason for.
Finish your, finish your statement, Bo, and then and then we want to stop.
Sir.
Then finish your last sentence, and then we'll stop.
Okay. The recall.
Make sure we don't attack anybody.
Sir.
See, I say just make sure we're not attacking anybody.
I'm not attacking. I'm not calling any.
You're doing good. You're doing good. I'm just saying.
I'm not calling any name, but what I want to say is that the person that's making the recall, I don't understand. No disrespect to anyone. And what I like to say, ending, what I like to say, I think this is all about racial. Because we got two people that's on the city council. One is the mayor, one is the council meeting. And here just recently, an email was sent to the City of Lamarck
Okay.
about taking someone's yard.
Yeah.
And I think this need to be stopped. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Miss Hana. Thank you. Mr. Hana, Mr. Hana, Mr. Hana.
Need your address for the record.
Back it.
Twenty-six thirteen Lake Park Drive.
Thank you, sir.
Lamarck, Texas, seven seven five six eight.
Thank you, Miss Hana. All right, I don't think we have anyone else from online signaling that that they'd like to speak. So we'll move to item five. Public hearing, conduct public hearing to hear public input on five-one ordinance number letter O dash two zero two two dash zero zero one zero, amending residential canal zoning. Kira, what time shall we close the special meeting?
Six thirty-three.
Special meeting is closed at six thirty-three. We will open the public hearing at six thirty-three. Is there any persons wishing to speak to item five one? Any persons wishing to speak to ordinance number letter O dash two zero two two dash zero zero one oh. Last call. Any persons wishing to speak to item five one? Hearing then we'll close this public hearing at?
Six thirty-four.
We will reopen the special meeting at six thirty-four. We'll move to item six six one ordinance number letter O dash two zero two two dash zero zero one zero, amending residential canal zoning. This is the second and final reading. I will entertain a motion.
So moved.
There a second?
My second.
Any discussion? Hearing then we'll call for a vote. All those in favor?
Hi.
Any opposed? Gus, so from this date, we we have thirty days before this becomes effective. So that we can, we have some Omega Bay residents. Let's get this, make sure that we're all on the same page.
No, Mayor, this was actually because of the the timing. This is effective immediately upon publication. And 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 just so you are aware, we've had that discussion with certain residents.
Want to make sure we're all clear. Good news. Thank you very much. Item seven, resolutions are also known as consent agenda. Following items shall be considered for action as a whole, unless one or more council members object. Thus otherwise specified, the city managers authorized to execute all necessary documents upon a final approval by the city attorney. Council, is there any one of these resolutions that we like to pull for independent discussion?
Mayor, that item seven-three, if if we need to pull it, any guidance, just on that one amendment in terms of clarifying the language?
If y'all wouldn't mind, if y'all could pull it and just in in your motion, make make include in there that asking the city manager and myself to request that amendment, city council, Lamarck, Homeroom, municipality.
We'll request that one.
Okay, okay, okay. Any other items? Are we needing to pull item seven-two, proposing a tax rate? We need to pull item seven-two item. So we'll take these individually, seven-one, seven-two, and seven-three. Now they're all separate. So let's let's move to seven-one. Resolution number letter R dash two zero two two dash zero zero six one, authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement with the Goodman Corporation. Says so.
Good evening, Mayor, council, residents. This is an item as a follow-up from our last meeting. This is the item that we pulled from being in RFP. We found a very formidable quote from the same group that was brought to you before that did the study. So we can pursue this grant opportunity as well as other opportunities that are tied to that transportation plan in order to make our seats, our our streets safer for pedestrian traffic. This project that we're going after funding for would call for pedestrian-friendly sidewalks and or bike lanes that would stretch from Texas Ave from its inception on one forty-six all the way to two double oh four. So essentially connecting both sides of the cities that are currently separated by natural vibe being I forty-five.
Yep.
We discussed that length last time. This is just further discussion for that.
Awesome. Any questions at this point?
Comment, city manager, that's our, I I'm familiar with the Goodman Corporation. The, one of the areas of to seek additional points for the grant submission is where there's a collaboration. This is one of those things that I've mentioned to you, if you could reach out to the school district as well as College of the Mainland with their new construction program out there, to the extent that there can be some sort of component that will permit bike lanes for our youth to get to the university or to get to school. Those are additional points that would certainly be helpful as they consider our grant application.
Certainly, and if I may to respond to that, we've reached out to TCISD for their support on this opportunity, as well as the safe, safe routes to school. And as well as the safe, safe streets for all grant opportunities. We've also reached out to HGC for the support on this. And lastly, since it is a tech stock growth, we have reached out to them for support as well as another possible funding source to help attain this goal that was set forward by council. I believe dating back to twenty eighteen, when this presentation was first made.
Well, just to be clear, I know that their work was originally on the main street, but for purposes of this grant, this is the question. We're 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 not limiting the possible projects to. the possible projects to Main Street. Like Boucher has a need for different sidewalks and, and bike lanes.
Right.
Uh, around the schools uh, to connect even to the new elementary school, the new middle, middle school as well, too.
So as far as the auspice for this particular grant fund opportunity, which is reconnecting communities, um, this opportunity, since we already have a plan for this project, uh, we feel after evaluation that that would offer us the most points. We are looking at creating a plan for Boucher, exit ten, exit fifteen, as well as a potential of, so ten, twelve, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, and then ultimately fifteen, so we can have connections all the way through. The first one that we already have a plan that, that, that council's already adopted is exit twelve, which is Texas Ave, which we're ready to march forward now. That's why we're proposing this because the deadline is quickly approaching. We feel we've got a very strong component to attack this. However, all the other grants, we've already reached out to HGC for their partnership on the safe routes to school as well as safe streets that we're trying to partner in whatever capacity to try all of our sidewalks. As you know, we, we've just been awarded with Main Street um, from forty-five all the way to Highway three. We've also been awarded through Techstock as well from Main Street all the way to Texas Ave along, uh, um, the Highway three corridor. And then this would be the extension of that project to keep that going. Uh, in the past, we have applied for different grants to on, on Bayou and on Cedar, and we'll continue being aggressive for all, but this particular one that we're after is reconnecting communities. And for that formality, the plan that we have is best suited for that track that we kept right now for the most points we can get for construction. We don't want design, we're going to approach for other things, but for construction to get action done, which is what residents are actually uh, requesting, that is the best suited one at this time. With your support, thank you.
Any other questions for Sesa?
Nope.
Very good. Let's call for the question. I believe we have a motion in a second already. Is that correct? Or we don't?
No.
No.
Very good. I caught myself.
I make a motion to approve.
Casey, Casey makes the motion. Joe seconded it. Any further discussion? Hearing then we'll call for a vote. All those in favor?
Hi.
Any opposed? Item seven-two, resolution number letter R dash two zero two-two dash zero zero six-two, proposing a tax rate for the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three fiscal year. Say so.
Thank you, mayor. Uh, this item is before you, uh, in discussion regarding our tax rate. There's been much discussion through the public. Um, as was released over this past weekend. We've also, uh, tried to clear the air on some of the things that have been going on out there uh, to present nothing but factual information as to where we stand at this point. Um, to clarify that further, the item that stands before you is strictly for the, uh, adoption of, excuse me, the proposal of a, of a tax rate uh, equal to the amendments rate as reported by our current tax assessor's office.
What is that rate?
The decimal points are beside me. Give me one second.
Point four six, one six two eight.
Thank you very much. Point four six, one six, two eight.
Two eight. Very good. Council, uh, do we have any questions? Any discussion? Questions? No discussion?
No.
I will entertain a motion.
So moved.
Uh, mayor, this is a roll call vote, so I have to go down.
It's a roll call vote. And so we have a motion by
myself.
Uh, Michael in a second.
Mayor, I'm so sorry. If I may, I'd like to recognize that our finance director is listening in. Um, Ms. Suzie, if, if, if you're available to chime in, I want to make sure there was no objection to everything as is written pertaining to your return to have time to review, uh, our INS MNO rate and subsequent tax rate. Sorry to put you on the spot.
Sorry. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes. Um, I'm fine with the MNO and INS rate as stated in the resolution.
Thank you, ma'am. Welcome back.
Thank you.
So, uh, Michael made the motion. Joe seconded it. Is that what it is? We had forty-six cents?
Yes, sir.
The minimum is forty-six?
Forty-six, uh, point four six, one six, two eight.
Take it away, Kiera.
Councilmember District A.
Um, in favor, I, I do, I would like to, to say.
Did you want to back out and make, take to have discussion?
Let's back out and have a discussion. I think it's important
Go ahead.
That our residents understand why we're not doing forty-seven cents. I know we explained that last meeting, but we have new residents that are here. Um, this is because of the error that was made on the, uh, tax calculation sheet. And the reason why we can't do forty-seven according to the vote uh, of the tax rollback is because it would trigger another rollback. And I want to make sure that everyone understands that. Because of the error, we uh, are harmed. Uh, and, and that error needs to be fixed. And, and if I'm correct, Sesa, we're still waiting on the opinion.
Uh, yes, ma'am. Uh, we are still, uh, waiting on the opinion. Um, our tax assessor's office has reached out um, through, through her channels in order to, um, try to get us that opinion from the AG's office.
Well, I'm, I'm going Austin in the morning. And I'll make some, some stops while I'm there.
Sure.
Um, to, to, to see what we can do to, so this will not happen again. It's very unfortunate that for three years, this has happened to our city. Um, some of the same circumstances, I was there with Lamar ISD when Lamar was defunded. And it seems as if we have characters within our county that are trying to do the same thing to the city. And I want to make sure that we unify as a city to make sure that it's corrected. I could care less whose fault it is. That's not important to me. Correct the mistake. Correct the mistake. And that's what I hope that your administration, this administration will really do, even when we pass this rate that's also incorrect based on everything that we have coming in. Um, and it's unfortunate. It's, it's really unfortunate that, that our citizens have to perhaps have a lack of services because of a mistake of one person. But again, I'm not concerned. I could care less about who did it. Let's fix it and let's do it right forward, one forward. Okay, I'm done.
Certainly, ma'am. Um, and, and if I may, uh, we are working on that. And as soon as any details on that are, are available, I will turn it to share with all. Um, thank you for, for, for that, uh, vote of support. And we do hope to get it correct. Um, it is an unfortunate situation that we're all faced with and all doing the best we can to deal with. And, uh, we will, uh, hopefully do so, uh, successfully together.
Because we could have gotten a mosquito trip with, 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 with the original budget. And, and I don't know about anybody else, but I am really suffering with the mosquitoes.
Yes, ma'am. I, I think all of us are right now.
Okay, mayor. Thank you, mayor.
You're fine. Any other, uh, comments about, uh, this item? Any other questions? Okay, Kiera, take it away.
Councilmember District A.
Yes.
Councilmember District B.
Oh, what is it? Yes or four?
Either.
Either. Both.
Councilmember District C.
Four.
Councilmember District D. Four, mayor.
Against.
Motion passed with four eyes and one neck.
Thank you, council. Item seven-three, resolution number letter R dash two zero two-two dash zero zero six-three, authorizing the city manager execute a contract with the Galveston County Commissioners Court to provide fire protection services to unincorporated areas of Galveston County commencing upon signatures by both parties and running through September thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. Joe, I know you had a question about that.
Well, I'd like to. There's some discussion I'd like to have, but I also have a question. I'd like to go ahead and submit a motion with the amendment to this contract that the term city commission is replaced with city council.
Correct.
On the first paragraph.
Okay. Is there a second?
My second.
All right, go ahead.
Uh, just, uh, I think I saw Chief Merriman here. Chief, I, I, I am curious. This contract, the fee in here, is this the same fee that was charged last year? Give me some history of this. That's all I'm looking for.
Good evening, mayor and council. Uh, mayor pro tempore, that's the same contract that the city has been with, uh, Galveston County. Um, as long as I've been working here since twenty thirteen, the contract hasn't changed. The fee has always been twenty-two thousand, five hundred dollars. It is deposited into what is considered our Fund Forty-eight account where we use that for, um, truck equipment, protective equipment and safety supplies. That is the fee that we are given for providing mutual aid service to the unincorporated areas of Galveston County.
So other cities probably enter into the same agreement with the county. Is that correct?
Every fire department in Galveston County is a member of the Galveston County Firefighters Association.
And, and do you know if, um, if those contracts are this, have they consistently paid the same amount as well?
To my knowledge, yes.
Okay. Uh, my only comment is, as long as everybody else has been paid the same amount over this period of time and that we're not being singled out for, you know, some sort of, uh, reduction in what we receive based upon what other cities are receiving, I support this. But if I find out that it's otherwise, you know, that's inherently unfair.
To my knowledge, it is the same that goes all the way around, including the uh, us being one of only three paid fire departments in the county. Um, we have the same requirements as the rest of them. Um, we just don't always get funding for other things that the volunteer services would get. But that's the same amount that is provided to, um, the three paid fire departments that I know for sure. And that's the same, the, the verbiage on it is the same verbiage that we've had as long as I've known. I uh, thank you, Mr. Olson. I, I never noticed the the city commission on it. It's, and I've probably stared at that contract a bunch.
Thank you, chief.
Any other comments or questions on this item?
No, mayor, none for me.
Let's move to the question. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item eight, new business. Uh, there is none other than items, items for the good of the order. So we will certainly entertain those, council. Anyone have any items for the good of the order?
Um, mayor, once again, we express our sympathy to the family of Mayor Geraldine Sam. Uh, as I understand, there, there's a service scheduled for, for Friday at Lamarck High School.
And Saturday.
And then Saturday.
Saturday.
I'm sorry, that's Saturday in Lamarck High School. And then at the church on Friday. Correct. And, uh, so that's, um, I think the detail will come out as well too, soon on that. And then as well is that on Wednesday, those of you, uh, Lamarck has always had a history of, of, um, recognizing our veterans. And, uh, you may recall that after Hurricane Harvey, mayor, I think you're, we're here, we're involved with that veteran that, that was given a house, a disabled house as well. And so we have some residents that are also, uh, going to be doing a drive-by recognition for uh, a recent veteran, Mr. Eric Swivel, I believe is, and, uh, that's, uh, on Wednesday at eleven-thirty is the gathering point is at the Dollar General here across, um, um, the police department is there, will be leading the drive-by. That's terrible, terrible drive-by. The, the recognition, the driving recognition. Uh, and, uh,
Mobile recognition.
The mobile recognition, right? And, uh, I think the fire department will be involved in some presence as well, too. And if you have the time, just come to join in line and, and we give thanks afterwards. Those that are, that are interested, I think they're going to be, uh, going and having some lunch at Benito's is what I understand, too. So that's on Wednesday at eleven-thirty, if you have availability for that. That's all I have, mayor. Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Mayor, I got a couple things.
Um,
actually, three things. First one, there's been a lot of passings in the community lately. So, um, thoughts and prayers go out to all their families. Um, also to our employees, thoughts and prayers also. Uh, next item, Lamarck Girls Softball Association. Some of you may have heard about it. Some of you may have not. Um, they are looking for a lot of participation. Um, this is a program for the teens, especially girls, uh, softball. Um, they're looking for as many teams as possible, as many people as possible. Um, unfortunately, they, they miss the, the fall. So it's going to kick up in the spring. So if you have any girls interested or spread the news, um, that's a great place. It's a great activity for the girls. Um, the boys, I don't have anything yet. I'm still working on that one. And the last one is to everyone in Omega Bay. Uh, it took a long time, but the ordinance got passed, so. So thank you for all your support. So that's all I have, mayor.
Um, I just, I, I didn't get to join in what I assume was, um, a lot of moments of remembrance for Mayor Sam, uh, last Monday. And I just wanted to add to the chorus of people remembering what a brilliant person Ms. Ms. Geraldine Sam was. I feel very lucky to have, um, gotten to know her in my life. It was for too short a time. And she was so incredibly kind to me as during my first term here on council. And um, just a, a very calming and assuring presence to me. She gave, she shared many things with me that I will carry forever. And I'm very, very grateful to have gotten to know her. And I'm very sad that she has left the, she's shaken off the mortal coil, but I know that her faith was very strong in what laid ahead for her. And I celebrate in the knowledge that she was a good, good woman. And Lamarck was very lucky to have her. So that's all I got. Thank you.
Uh, just, just want to say, um, to, so you did say something about the boys. So the Bobby Beach, they are, um, in October, they will be, um, signing up to play. So that's, yeah, so we'll be, they're looking for, uh, persons to volunteer on their board. Uh, had an amazing meeting with them. We've got some amazing things that are happening in our city that we're very, very proud of. We did get in touch with the CEO of Frenchies. So we are talking to them as well. Our EDC is doing some amazing things. Um, one thing that we don't want to do is that we don't want to continue to, uh, just talk about the negative. We have so many positive things that are hap, that's happening right here every second, every day. Our staff, they're working hard. Our police force is working hard to make sure that since we are the second fastest growing city in the county. And I will not be dismayed by negativity. Because I come from a family of, 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 of overcomers, of achievers. And we believe that when what you give too much focus to wins. But the good things about Lamarck is that our school district is a B. Families are moving here in droves and no matter what one or two or a few may have to say, this is still an amazing city. And so I, I, I'm grateful for people like Kirk and the, uh, Clear Media Group and Kyle who are all, and JB, they're always focusing on the positive. Thank you for doing that. Because that is how we get through these tough times. And this, my, my dad always would say, this too shall pass. Trouble doesn't last always. And so we're going to always focus on the good things. I don't know about anybody else, but everybody else in District A is an, we're, we're doing something in District A. What she, what, what he didn't mention was we getting sidewalks too on Lake Road. Am I right?
So as, as, as part of this project, should we be funded, Lake Road, the intersection of Lake Road and Texas Ave would be included. We, we're, we're putting additional funding applications will be brought to you in the future when they're announced about adding sidewalks on Lake Cedar, Bayou. They're all going to be part of the safe routes to school. We're aggressively looking at the best route of transportation, not only vehicular, but also bike and pedestrian. Any funding opportunity that comes up, we're attacking, um, with enthusiasm. And, uh, with your support, we will put an application for any of them that, that, uh, becomes available.
And that's good news. Can you imagine bike, bike trails, bike sidewalks down Lake Road? That is a manifestation of our community working together, making good decisions to make our community safer. And so with that, I just, you, you're always going to see me focusing on the positive because that's, that's who I am. Now, how do we go forward with a smile? How do we go forward with a smile? Let's get ready to go through some tough times, but remember what I said, this too shall pass. When you strive for excellence. Excuse me, when you strive for perfection, you'll catch excellence. So let's make sure. So our staff stay encouraged, this too shall, shall pass.
Thank you.
And I love everybody, everybody, every single one. Love always wins. In the end.
Thank you, Kim. Wanted to acknowledge the uh. The uh Blackberry Festival.
Yes.
That was held on. It's past Saturday. Ended up being rained out. Around two o'clock, we were supposed to have a, I think it was a blackberry pie eating contest. Was that what it was? We were going to judge it, uh, and it rained it out. I never had blackberry pie, so. Been an adventure, James. But we want to, we want to certainly acknowledge that uh it was held. Wonderful people, the community was excited about it. Uh, and a good time was had. Good, positive, positive day. So we want to thank the church. Uh, for, I think it's word power. Church is the name of the church. For having the inaugural Blackberry Festival. Wanted also uh. Say uh, in addition to what has already been said about Mayor Geraldine Sam. Uh. Her public services will be Saturday. I think that's September the.
Second.
Second, Saturday, September the second, third, forgive me, September the third. Saturday, September the third, uh. Visitation will start at nine AM at Lamarck High School. Uh, and I believe the services will start at eleven AM. At Lamarck High School, I believe in the Lamarck High School. Is it the auditorium? Kim, is that what they call it? Auditorium. Uh, certainly, council, if you're planning on attending, let Kiara know so that there can be a notice of form. Uh, for our delegation if there are more than, than uh, more than two of us. Lastly, I wanted to just say. Uh, because we won't have a chance to say it before. The day. Uh, Happy Labor Day. To the American worker. My previous life as a firefighter, I was a union member. Certainly, my time as an elected official, I've been a union candidate. And I stand with labor one hundred percent. And so to the men and women all over this country and all over this world. That are uh in labor, in particular in organized labor, we want to wish you a happy, happy Labor Day. Especially the men and women of. Uh, the staff of the city of Lamarck, whether you be public safety or. Otherwise, happy, happy Labor Day. You deserve uh to be honored on that day. Uh, that's all I have, say so. Do you have anything?
Uh, yes, if I may, I, I'd like to uh thank the community for the outpouring um. Uh, support. Um, in these tough times of uh potentially being volunteers. Or working through a process of uh potentially having folks come on formally as volunteers and, and in, in what capacities. As you can understand, there's certain things that we need to have certain levels of backgrounds and clearances for, so please understand we're not. Not wanting your help. We just need to make sure that we do that accordingly because it's not very common to get this outpouring of support. Uh, we thank you. We uh, uh, once we have a process stated, we, we will definitely announce it formally. Um, but we just wanted to thank you guys for that. Um, also, um, point of public safety, if you will, uh, a message went out earlier about exit twelve. With this outpouring of rain, uh, please be cognizant of the fact that um. Uh, exit twelve is uh a potentially hazardous uh exit. Which is the Texas Ave, particularly southbound. Uh, coming off of I forty-five. Uh, our staff was, was diligently working on it. We've uh put a traffic sign out there. Uh, we are working on that. Um, and making sure that we put public safety first for, for all folks. So nobody is injured um or, or stuck out there. And uh lastly, on the uh, I guess, second to last, first, the uh mosquito situation. I've gotten a lot of calls about that. Um, we, 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 we do have a contract with the county. Uh, this is not a Lamarck problem. This is a everybody problem right now in the entire county who uses these services. Uh, we do currently have um. A agreement with the county for that and, 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 and they do great work. Uh, I hear in the middle of night when they drive through the neighborhood, through, through my neighborhood, like whenever they actually come through. Um, unfortunately, when it rains, it does dissipate that, so understand, please understand that's a situation. Uh, should we have further support and if we're somehow able to miraculously fit some, some more support of that in the budget, we will definitely look at doing so. But we will get back to you on that. Um, and that's, that's really the point that I wanted to make uh as, as far as that's concerned. And my last point really just to thank everybody for the outpouring of, of support through, through these tough times. We appreciate it. We're all on one team. We're just trying to get through this. There's a lot of items. You, you mentioned reaching for, for a perfection. We are, we're far from it. Um, but, but as a team, we do strive for it. So thank you very much.
Sorry, I know you're, you're such a go-getter and your enthusiasm and your passion is always showing. I, I want to be clear though, and, and you can clarify that for me. The situation at exit twelve. Is not a doing of the city of Lamarck. That is the work that Tech Stock is doing there. So I, I now know because I've communicated with you. That I'm asking you to hold Tech Stock responsible. To get that situation cleared up.
Well, and, and yes, Mayor Pro Tim, um, the normal situation that happens at, at the base of exit twelve in front of the gas station. Is one that they have addressed because thankfully that that's not where the problem is. Now the problem has occurred a little bit further up. Closer to where the public uh storage or uh like U-Haul location is, which has caused her to be more concerned there. Uh, there's a lot of remedies that they're working on and through earlier, right before this meeting, they were doing their best to clear that up as well. We thought we had to temporarily close exit twelve, but thankfully we were um. We didn't have to. We were able to close down one lane if, if not mistaken, uh, but those in the back, I, I've seen nodded heads, yes. But it has been fully reopened now. Now there's still some standing water. Uh, but a lot of that has to do with some of the just. We've got a lot of rain um in a short amount of time. Thank you.
Anything else for the good of the order? All right, we're moving through executive session. We don't have one. So we're now down to item eleven, adjournment. I will entertain a motion to adjourn. The second?
Second.
All in favor?